Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Present.
Councilman Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Potembe Duper is absent. There is a poll.
Okay, let's begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Popescu.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to live in this amazing country, amazing state, and amazing city. We thank you so much for the opportunities you've given us to serve all of those people who live here in Nwolonda. We ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate and make decisions that will impact the city for many years to come. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the zero members of the public like to speak?
Yeah, I'm looking for Elmer Kilm.
Yeah.
We should be taking attendance for him.
Is this a silent protest, I wonder?
I'm disappointed.
Yeah. Well, we'll be dealing with conflict of interest issues, probably on item number three. So, the consent calendar is there for your motion.
I move it.
Is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. New business night, item three, Council Bill R-2016-11, canceling the June 2000, June 7, 2016 general municipal election, and appointing to the office the persons who have been nominated. Because of my personal conflict, I'm going to pass the leadership hammer to Councilman Daly.
Four years, this is what I've been looking forward to.
Don't get used to it.
Dental school, they don't give me a gavel. They don't trust me with it.
Isn't it six years?
Six years, six years, yeah, it is.
You've been here six years.
Six years, yeah. Time flies. All right, my understanding is that the intent of what we're here for tonight is in light of the fact that this is a non-competitive election, that we need to vote each of the three applicants in. Do I have that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Potembe. Pursuant to the election code, you have really two options at this time. To appoint to the office the members who've been nominated to serve again, or to hold an election. And in the absence of any other competitive nominations, the recommendation of staff is to go ahead and reappoint to a further four-year term each of the three incumbents who have been nominated to serve again. And in order to avoid any of the three having to vote for themselves, we will do that one at a time, with the person being nominated and reappointed recusing himself from acting on his own reappointment.
And is this a voice vote or a hand vote?
Voice.
Whatever I want?
However you wish.
When do I get to use the gavel?
Anytime. Order. Order.
We'll talk over you.
So, the first motion would be to appoint to a further four-year term Mayor Rhodes Rigsby.
And, okay, so I assume I need a nomination for that?
It's just a motion to reappoint.
Okay. Is there a motion to reappoint Mayor Rigsby as a city councilman?
I move.
And I need a second. Yeah, don't reflect too long. I've got a gavel next to me. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Say aye.
I'm asking for hands. I've got the gavel ready. Okay, and that's unanimous.
And, no, I'm abstaining.
Okay, the mayor abstains.
Abstain or recuse themselves, there's technically a difference?
Well, there is a difference, but not to draw fine lines. We understand that those who are being reappointed are choosing to recuse themselves due to any semblance of a conflict of interest.
So, let's use the right term.
I recuse and abstain. I have been duly chastised.
Okay, moving forward, I assume we move back then to Councilman Leonard.
I move Councilman Leonard's reelection for another four-year term to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay, boy, that was easy. Right through. All in favor, please raise your hands.
And I say aye.
It looks unanimous. And then we've got number three.
I nominate Ovi Popescu to one more term, four years on the city council, and I move that we appoint him to that position.
And I will abstain from this vote?
Okay, it sounds like we figured out how to do this now. All in favor, please raise your hands. And in the case of Mr. Popescu, I guess we don't have to say anything because you don't get to vote this time. All right, we got hands. Carrie, that's the part I've been waiting for.
Now we proceed to the resolution.
Yes, the resolution before you, R-2016-11, is to cancel the June 7, 2016 general municipal election, and it will summarize and document the previous actions to reappoint the three councilmembers to a new four-year term. And so, the motion would be to approve that resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Why don't you make the motion?
No. I'll second it.
We're all voting.
Who made the motion? Okay. Councilman Leonard made the motion with a second by Councilman Popescu. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it sounds like we have a unanimous consent. And I reluctantly give up my gavel.
Okay, item four, we have a discussion and direction to the staff regarding city council salary. It is a fact that the last time the city council had a salary adjustment was 2006, just before the seating of the council after the election of June 6, 2006. And in ten years, the salary has remained stagnant.
But that should decrease.
And it decreased, well, not salary, but the benefits decreased during a time in sympathy with the decrease in benefits of the city staff, and that decrease was reversed for them, and I'm not sure whether it was for us. It was reversed for us, too, yeah. So, the question comes, would it be appropriate for the city council to have an increase in their salaries?
I would have thought this would have brought a crowd out tonight, but...
Yeah, there's...
What is common practice and what is the benchmark?
So, the council can select the salary between $711.13 and $1,066.73.
And that's based on the 5% increase?
Yes, sir.
And do we have benchmarks of what do Redlands and San Bernardino or any of the other local?
No, sir.
San Bernardino's salary is $50 per month pursuant to a 1932 city charter that has not been amended.
Yeah, but they actually...
But they get an expense account.
Yeah, they do. And they actually, yes, well, almost, I think more than $1,400 a month. I mean, they have a phone, they have, I think some even them have staff, if that matters, they can.
This is San Bernardino?
Yeah.
So, they would be in excess of what we're looking at as a maximum?
I have another question. This only applies to salary, but what about the benefits? What's the, what is the amount? And is that...
The city council, we see the same benefits that staff does.
But I think our benefits are capped at the salary. It can't be more than the salary. So, if it went up, then if the staff benefits are higher than our current salary, then the benefits would go up, right?
So, I would like some clarity as to what exactly the benefits are for the employees and how's that compared to us?
I don't have that number.
And that's fine, and that's why this is a discussion where it's to get some more information. So, it helps us make a decision, because we're not making a decision tonight. This is just, and I, to talk about it and get more information.
You mean, that's the meeting with us every...
Yeah, well.
But the bottom line is, it's ten years since the city council's had any kind of increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think it's reasonable that we get some kind of an increase then, just...
Are we certain that...
Not because we depend on the income, that's for sure.
But are we certain that we're actually getting $711.11 right now?
Yes.
For some reason, mine doesn't come out to that much. I'm not sure why.
What happened this week is I actually had Dusty's check delivered to my mail.
Really?
I got yours.
Did you?
I put it on your desk.
Do you have some...
I've got mine, I've got yours at home.
I do, I have some, 85 goes through that, 25 to another account, and 10 to another account. So, 35 to 65 is, what is that, 120? And yet, when I get a check, it's only for like five something. Yeah.
I get $20. Because I put 430 on federal and 200 on state, so I get $20 left over. And every year, TurboTax asks me, "Do you really mean that you made $8,000 and you put 5,600 on your federal taxes?" Yes, I did.
Jarb, I'm interested in knowing where the $1,066 came from.
I could answer that. The state law allows, in the government code, for a 5% annual increase from the last increase. And that's not compounded pursuant to a, an attorney general's opinion that came out about the time of the last increase. So, we just did the simple arithmetic, Pam and me. And so, 5% of 711.13 is 35.56. That's the maximum increase. Since there's been 10 years, you multiply times 10. So, the total allowable increase would be $355.60. Or any amount below that.
Staff have a recommendation? I'm asking you. This is your chance to get big browning points.
I wanted the, I wanted the public to have it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Republican.
Well, for some of us, yes, I agree that we don't rely on the salary. However, I know for a fact that myself, I've, in fact, this is gonna happen this summer. I'm actually gonna take time off. Not that I'm complaining about taking time off, but I've actually used vacation time for my work and, in addition to that, take time off without pay. So, I'm actually not going to work and not getting paid to attend events and to go to different things. I don't mind doing that, but there is a price on paying for that by losing income. So, I think that any increase is, for me, more than justified, given the amount of effort and energy I put into it. It's noted that, a couple interesting facts. The last council increase back in 19, in 2006, was almost 90% compared to the prior year. It should be noted that between 1990 to 2006, the city grew significantly. So, there's, obviously, there was increased, you know, increase of the budget. I think that if we look at where we've been the last 10 years, despite the recession, our revenue has actually increased. We've actually recovered, I continue to do well. So, you always wanna be conscious of the fact that if you're, if you're gonna increase the salaries, you wanna make sure there's enough money for it. I think, looking forward, we've been able to successfully bring in enough businesses that will keep revenues growing, and that's very, very unique. Most cities around here are having to scramble to bring in new businesses and new homes simply to increase the tax rolls. But in our case, in fact, Dusty and I met with them yesterday, they're doing very well. Mansfield Oil is, it's growing, and if they keep growing at the rate that they're growing, our revenue will increase substantially. I mean, it, within seven years, we would generate enough tax increment just from their sales that is gonna equal the doubling, the doubling of our population, which obviously, we will never see that as a city, given the fact that there's no room for that. So, financially, the city's, you know, in good hands. So, those are my views on it. Given the fact that we haven't had them on 10 years, it says a great deal. So, I think that the amount is reasonable, given the amount of energy and time we put into the job. Sometimes, it may not always reflect based on what you see in the meetings, but many of us do attend multiple meetings, get phone calls at home, meet with staff, of course, sit on various other boards. Those boards do pay, but not, you're always involved with the workload in those boards that do not involve the meetings. So, those are my thoughts on the matter.
So, if we would have 300 a month, times five people, times 12 months, it's like $18,000. Did I do the math right? I just did it in my head. Does that include the benefit? Oh, that's if you go to the top. I was thinking like, a little bit less than like a thousand or something. So, it's not that much, but the benefits might go up some, too, so that would actually be a little more cost. And then, what about our staff? I know they took some cuts over past time period and so forth. Have they been kinda caught back up, or are they still behind?
Well, we, for next year, we have a, this year, we have a two-year agreement where for next year, they will get 2.5% increase.
But over the last 10 years, what has been...
We're not quite there yet, but what happened is, we all took the pay cut, a 7% pay cut, in addition to not getting raised for like four years. So, but, but this past two, three years, we've been getting pay raises, and will be for next year, too.
Yeah, we took the same cut, right? We're paying our own employee, employee portion of the...
Per contribution, yes, yes. Again, this is all the employee and the union agree, so, so thank you all of them to do that for us.
So, we can afford to buy a new fire truck, to hire a new full-time policeman, and to give a raise to five city councilmen all in the same year.
But the fire engine is this fiscal year, this is the next fiscal year. I'm still working on the budget for next fiscal year, so we're gonna...
Next fiscal year for police.
For this. This won't go into effect until we're seated in June. Because by law, the changes can only occur upon the seating of new councilmen, not in between.
I mean, it's, I think it's stating the obvious. None of us do this because of the money it puts in our pocket. It's just kinda decimal dust.
You can donate to the student fund account.
Yeah, we, well... We, I encumber it. I haven't used it yet, but... So, I don't wanna be greedy, but at the same time, when we're making significant investments in other areas, then I don't know how you pick what time it's appropriate to pay a city council. I actually wish there were people here to weigh in on this. I gotta believe some of them would have an opinion.
I've actually talked to a few folks when this brought up, and the folks that I talked to, given the amount that we make, see no problem with us getting a raise. We just have to decide as a group what we think is an appropriate amount, so...
If you're really looking for a staff opinion, I think it's pretty clear that even if you max it, it's pretty modest for what's happening here. From a staff's perspective, I mean, we see the investment that our councilmen make from time to time in order to bring things to our city, and it keeps...
We're not making what a fireman does.
You're not making what a fireman does.
Having said that, I'm a little worried that our local anesthesiologist does numbers in the head and can't get them right.
Yeah, and our, and our...
I wasn't thinking of giving it a total max, I was thinking of...
I think our, I think our overtime...
You had fractions brought into the...
Our overtime rate is below minimum wage.
That's right. And I don't think anyone would perceive that as an unreasonable thing to do, if you're, if you're curious about that.
I wish government, not just city, would run like a business where the, you know, CEO or board members get paid based on results. And, you know, most CEOs get paid on the bonuses based on how the corporation does well. So, if a city doesn't do well, guess what? You go down. But unfortunately, the government has endless amounts of money from taxpayers, so we have to approach it in a different view, but...
Not our government.
That's true. It's, we have perception that we have money. Federal, that is. On the state level and local level, we're actually doing okay.
I was going 355. I was not thinking of maxing it to the way you thought. Although, it's kinda interesting, I will say that when I talk to people and if it ever comes up and they say, "What, you get paid for that?" I'll say, "Yeah," and they'll say, "Yeah, how much?" And if I tell them how much, and most people are actually shocked because they, they just believe greed and avarice of the, of the average city council, and they're shocked at how little it is, comparatively speaking, when they read all these stories of Bell and, was it Bell down there?
Bell.
So, they think that...
400 grand, yeah.
Yeah, most people are actually surprised how low it is.
The council that wasn't getting paid, it was staff that was paid a lot.
Oh, yeah. But even, even councils get paid a bit, in other ways.
Well, I think they were making close to 70 or something like that.
No, I think they were, they were making a lot, I think over $100,000, but...
So, our distinguished mayor has not kinda laid his reputation on the line here.
Well, I'm, I'm curious to hear what Councilman Duper thinks as well.
He follows, he doesn't lead.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that we need to ask some citizens, but none of them showed up today. And we gave the standard notice for the meeting. Yeah, I'm, the only thing I would be concerned about is if, is if people thought this was, you know, in, in a time of austerity, which it isn't, we've actually got growing budgets, and in a time of, you know, an anti-government attitude in the country. Is this tone deaf? I don't know. I think we're starting from the, you know, basement of pay. I don't think that this is something that shocks the conscience, this proposal. And we can make any increase up to that amount. Doesn't have to be that exact amount. But whatever we increase it to becomes the new base, and it cannot be the part of the increase that was not taken would be lost forever, would not be available. So, those are just a few of my thoughts. I don't think that this shocks conscience. I don't think that there would be a hue and cry against it, and if there were, I think we'd have to deal with it. And it's, like I said, this is a year where traditional politicians are being shown the door, at least at the presidential level, and I don't think any of us would qualify as a traditional politician. So, I'm not sure we're the subject of the ire of the populace. We have yet to see what the California electorate chooses, but...
There's a few more national politicians that need to be shown the door.
Oh, there are a lot more, yeah. Of course, we don't count ourselves among them.
Well, obviously, the decisions aren't gonna be made tonight. It would be nice to have the item on the agenda for the next meeting. Phil Duper's gonna be here and give us some more numbers on the benefits, how they compare to the staff, and then we can make a decision at the next meeting.
Do we have to agendize an amount, or just...
Yes, because you require a public hearing on this one. Am I correct?
Oh, so you want directions from staff?
Yes, you should give notice. I would use the maximum amount. You can always do a lesser amount.
Just a math question. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't each, not that I want every little penny, but wouldn't you be basing every year on a higher rate?
No.
He said compounding, compounding was disallowed. And, and technically, it's rounding, there's a rounding error in your calculation. It would be 69 cents if you just take it off the 711.13 times 1.5. It's, it's a four cent, it's a four cent boon because of a rounding. A one-year rounding multiplied by five instead of 50%.
The first year.
Yeah.
And then you use that same number.
Yeah, it adds four cents, so that's my, that's my mathematical input.
Okay, based on the recommendation, based on the discussion I've heard, I'm gonna go ahead and, and...
It's consensus.
This goes on next time, so am I making a motion of what's gonna...
No formal action is required tonight or actually allowed, but you'd simply, if there's consensus to bring it back, the staff can take the input and prepare the formal action for consideration at the next meeting.
Bring it back with Jarb's support.
Yes, definitely, and with a maximum amount.
Yeah, and I'd like to know a little bit more about the benefits as well.
Okay, it's just, it's not a motion, it's just... Direction. Okay, are there any other reports of councilmen? Are there any reports of officers?
Yes, oh, councilman first.
Okay, where we at? Councilman first. I've been driving around and I'm finding way too many lawns with weeds high.
Agreed.
Have a nice rain and sunshine.
Yeah, well, I can tell you on the corner of Hinkley and, it's not a lot, Lozano. Somebody bought that house on the corner, fixed it all up, and now it looks like garbage. The house right next to it has been kinda white trash for a long time. The median across from the Shell Station is a mess. The off-ramp and on-ramp look worse than they've looked for months and months. And if that means the city councilmen need to get out there with a weed eater, I think we need to do that. But, but there's a lot of places in the city that really need some cleaning up. It's just looking crappy. And I'm willing to get specific addresses, but I've given you a couple.
Because of the, the rain and the heat, so I already called the company that take care of the off-ramp to spray the, the weed down, yes.
Yeah, 'cause it's looking bad. And then people throw cups and shoes, and I don't know what people do when they're going off in the off-ramp, but...
And on that note, I, I've had a complaint from a citizen. I don't have the exact address, but apparently, all you have to do is drive by it, and you can miss it. It's on Wallerburg Street. The house is basically abandoned. They said nobody actually goes in except they come in.
they come in every few weeks to get the mail. But, I mean, it has fallen so apart, that they think that the roof could actually cave in. That's how bad it is. I guess the lady moved many, many years. It's on Willough-
Barden?
Yeah, on the south side of Barton, just below Huron, on the, it'll be-
It's on Huron.
Yeah, it's going to be on the west side. Yeah, so.
And we don't have to have the botanical gardens in Loma Linda, but we need people to respect the city and, and our desire to be attractive. And.
Yeah, I think even where I live too, I walk around Antonio Circle, and there are people who just have let it go. And I think some, the rains make the way weeds go, but even when it wasn't raining, I think people will use the drought as an excuse not to do anything.
Excuse, exactly.
And it's like, well, my father-in-law want water, because he's so afraid that you're going to come and arrest him, because he got some notice in the mail. So I have to keep telling him, it's okay to use a little water. I think people, some people are just so afraid they even do anything, that they're, and they're using that as an excuse.
And we do the arresting when they don't mow it.
Yeah.
Or we do a weed abatement. And then we charge them.
Yeah, but weed abatement is more related to a fire issue.
Well, I guess that's always available to us.
But more and more places, even along Lawton, are just looking tacky. They're just not maintained. And I think if we send some notices, how people would, would kind of get the, capture the flavor of what we're after and appreciate.
And if you want us to be the bad guys, just let them know by the city council.
City ordinance. Okay, any other comments? Then report of officer?
Yes. I just received an email from Sandbag, that we're going to have ribbon cutting for the I-ten Tippecanoe interchange on May the thirteenth, so.
Oh.
From type of what?
I- I-ten Tippecanoe interchange. So I think it's ten o'clock.
That's a Friday?
By day, we'll send out invitation, Friday the thirteenth, yes.
And where is that going to be?
Friday the thirteenth.
I don't have information yet. They just sent me a, an email.
And we're going to demand that it be called the I-ten Tippecanoe Anderson interchange, just for the ribbon cutting. I have to keep reminding them.
And the Redlands-Anderson intersection is much improved.
They haven't put a median back yet. When, when the median's going back, and the striping, and paved the whole thing, we love, a lot nicer.
It's not paved on Redlands Boulevard yet.
Not, not yet. Correct, correct. They had to put the median down first.
But the flow is much better.
And can we get a message to San Bernardino, that entire buses could be swallowed by their potholes on Waterman?
(inaudible).
I'll, I'll see the mayor tomorrow. I'll can mention it to him.
Tell him to pave his Waterman. And if they could, if they could go out and help time their, their lights on Barton, that would be nice, for people exiting Loma Linda at five o'clock.
Oh, yeah, that light is bad.
Disastrous.
So you'd wait forever to get it to change, to get across Camp, across Barton on campus.
Waterman.
No, I mean, even, even in the morning, like, I'll come in the morning, and I'll come down campus, and if no cars coming, I can sit for three minutes sometimes, waiting for a light to change, so I can get across Barton Road.
Yeah, that's, that is a, that is a persistent problem, but.
And the fear we expressed early on, with this new parking facility, because now, we're going to wait to get across Barton, then there's going to be ingress and egress, right after we get onto campus, across Barton onto campus. And then you go down another thirty feet, and you've got everybody walking across.
Right.
That's going to be a mess.
Well, one of, one of the options that was put forward, when they put in that employee parking garage, the one that's been done for years, that one, the idea was to limit the pedestrian crossings, and kind of force people to go up over the bridge. So that's one of the options that's there. You could just, you know, really cramp the amount of time, or the number of times that it allows pedestrians to cross.
Give them incentive to go over the bridge.
Exactly. But that's, we haven't ever had to do that, because it's not a big deal. But, but I think when, I don't know what the traffic studies showed, but when the employees and the patients are going up and down that street, it's going to be a new world. And they're talking about widening Campus Street between Stewart and University as well. And that'll flow even more traffic in. So that street is going to be quite busy.
What, what's the scheduled opening date of the new parking structure on Campus and Barton? I mean, they've made good, very good progress.
I, I, I'm not sure exact date, but I heard that in two weeks, in two or three weeks, that the parking structure will be done, but the elevator's not going to be done. So they're going to have a valet parking, where the, the, the valet driver will take the car, and drive up the parking structure, but they, they have to run down and, and up.
Yeah, the, the problem is-
But the elevator's not going to be ready.
The problem is that the timing of the project requires that they close big chunks of the front A lot, the main patient parking lot, to start working on the new building. And the parking garage will not be ready in time, so the plan is to, for about a month, valet park that parking garage for-
Oh, really?
For probably five hundred cars. It, it will be probably the biggest valet service you've seen in Southern California.
And then you're going to have truck traffic calling dirt from the, the site, to the lot behind the, on the north side of the Heart and Surgical Hospital. So that's where you can stop power dirt.
The dirt would come from the front of, from where the, the new medical center's going, around to, by the Heart and Surgical Hospital?
Yes, sir.
Interesting. Just smother those orange trees down there then?
N- n- no, there's, there's, there used to be a house there, that burned down, that university owned. And so they're going to stop power dirt over there.
Because the size of that building, that's going to be a lot of dirt.
Yes. There'll be a lot of truck traffic for a while. Yes, sir.
Have to break my moped down.
Now is the time to start walking to work.
I've got a little moped.
Be, be safe.
In that new parking lot, you just walk over on, by the FMO. After it's built, you can park there and walk across the bridge.
Yeah.
That'll be a while.
What is, what is the-
That'll be a while.
Expected completion date of the new structure they're working on at the FMO? Is that a year?
That parking garage, I think, was supposed to be done by December. I think it's probably not running on time, though, is it?
It's going to be high, yes. But they always saw excavation.
Yeah.
So they always saw work on the foundation.
The original date for this current parking garage was April, but they're running something like six weeks behind. And-
So because of the skin they're going to put on?
It's the elevator.
It's the elevators.
Yeah.
They're behind in production. And then they were planning to finish the one at the FMO, or at least to make it functional for the, for the construction workers to park there by December. And I don't think they're going to make that. You never know, though. They're very fast.
How have we been handling complaints now? I heard a lot of complaints in the beginning. I have not heard a lot for a few weeks. But there are parks, cars parking in all of the neighborhoods around the FMO. And in the beginning, I was getting a lot of complaints. I haven't heard anything for a while. Has there been a fix on that, or what's kind of-
Well, they, they come in to talk to us, and we give them the reason why it happened, and, and will Stewart also open up his dirt lot here, for a lot of people to park? The dirt lot in front of, you know, south side City Hall here.
They would have to walk from here quite a ways.
Yeah, but that's for another.
No question.
Well, there's a-
Back for it next, next couple of months.
There's a shuttle service taking the faculty medical office employees over by the VA. That's where they're currently parking.
Lawton Avenue.
Yeah. And it's causing a lot of people to say, the shuttle's a hassle, so they'd rather, you know, walk three blocks from Lawton Avenue, for example. Lawton Avenue's just parked all the way down it, but it's legal to park there. It's the closer streets that are, that are residentially permitted only, and those are still clear. They're not really parking there. They're parking in legal spots, but they're just crowding. Lawton is hard, it's not very wide, and when you've got parked cars on both sides, it's very difficult to get two cars down.
But they're even parking up Anderson always.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard any complaints for probably three or four weeks.
I think everybody realizes it's going to be some tough time, but there's light at the end of the tunnel, so they're not complaining too much. Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we will adjourn city council, and we'll move to our next agenda, which happens to be the successor agency to the RDA. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the non-existent attendance of the public like to make any comments by ventriloquism? I hear none. The consent calendar is there for your motion.
I'll move it. I just have a question. What does DHA consulting do for us?
DHA is Diane Hadlands and associate. They help us with, just prepare our ROPS, and, and just, you know, for some property tax assessments and stuff like that.
And the amount that we're giving them, is that per month, or is that cover a quarter?
No, that's, that just depends, depends on the hours that she works for us. So, it could vary from one month to the next.
And if we didn't have a successor agency, would we still be utilizing their services?
If we didn't have the successor agency, no.
Okay, so it's mostly because of the fact, and the ROPS?
Yes, she prepares, she assists a great deal with preparing the ROPS. And then, right now, we do have her working on some pass-through analysis for the agreements that the county is now calculating the pass-throughs, just to do verification of those calculations. And so she is doing additional work at this time.
And as a successor agency, we are getting some revenue for administrative tasks, right?
Correct, we get.
How much is that usually?
Annually, it's two fifty.
Okay.
Each six months, we get the one twenty-five allotment.
Okay. And we've been utilizing that to help pay for what mostly?
We use it for salaries, attorney fees, and consultant fees. Yeah, and they got it, and.
Okay, thank you.
And I would note that Robinson-Holdaway come in at the bargain price of eighty-three dollars. So there's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. That agenda is adjourned. Next is the Housing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agenda items? Hearing, no comment. We go to the consent calendar.
Move it with a question.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, go ahead with a question.
Who, I, I know they're a legal service, but Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roth, what do they do for us?
They, they are our, our attorneys for the-
That's Hips.
Housing Authority, and it's Mark Hips.
Mark Hips, okay. Has he been working for us recently?
Yes, he's been working with Pam on, hopefully, selling some properties, and the agreements that are involved in those property sales, and I'm not sure what else he's doing.
Okay. Getting good service, Pam?
Excellent service.
Oh, okay.
His rates are higher than Robinson-Holdaway. So there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Are there any board member reports? Any administrative reports? If not, then we are adjourned.
Is there anything that staff can tell us about future development? Because I've heard there's other hotels that are interested in looking at Loma Linda.
Yes, there is. Extended State Hotel, by Marriott, same builder, right next to the, right next to the-
Holiday Inn Express.
And I understand they're doing quite well.
Yeah, there's all this good room there.
That's why he's always been signed.
So this is first stage for Holiday Inn?
Because we, we've got a lot of property out there right next to the freeway yet, so is, is that showing good potential?
Yes. But what happened is, the, the vacant theaters owned by-
Robinson Construction.
Robinson did not, and I'm in a hurry of selling the property, so that might be big.
Very good.
And, and I know that the ownership of the properties that have the corporate center off of Mountain View changed, because the class just owned them. Is there some movement on the vacant land by the freeway?
No.
No? We had some people interested.
Well, we were, the reason we asked that is because there were surveyors out there on that property last week.
I was going to ask, in the last meeting, we were talking about the Barton Road frontage in front of the Walmart mall area. And then if you go down into where the medical practices are, there's a lot of daytime parking on the street there, and whether there were, we were going to add a, a red stripe there, I, right up next to the ingress egress. I noticed there's a red stripe there. Is that new, or is that something I hadn't seen before?
And you, sir, it might have to be last year.
Okay, so that keeps the cars away, backed away from the, okay, that's good. I noticed that today. Very good.
Okay, we are adjourned.
The next receding meeting is April, the-